For the good of those we seek to serve.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the regular council meeting of January 18th to order, and I would ask if there are any late items, Ms. Roberts?
That's the question.
Okay, thank you. So we move to a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We move to item four on the agenda, which is the adoption of minutes. We have several of them. Item four one, the December 21st regular council meeting minutes as presented. Moved. Thank you. Seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We have the item four two, the January 4th special committee minutes as presented.
So moved.
Motion adopted. Seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item four three, which is the January 4th committee of the whole minutes and a motion to adopt. It's moved and seconded. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we move to the January 4th public hearing minutes, and the council received the minutes of the 4th for information. So moved. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we move on to delegations, and we have three delegations this evening. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. This is supposed to be called Blue Monday. I don't believe it. I woke up in a great mood this morning, so I think we're all good. So our first presentation is the fourth quarter report for 2015, and we have Inspector Ray Carfentan here tonight. Thank you for coming again. Nice to see you. We missed you in the last one.
Thank you very much. I wanted to pass on my thanks on behalf of Staff Sergeant Adrian Marsden, who made his first appearance here at the last report, and spoke very kindly about the welcome that he got.
Yeah, he did a very good job.
Thanks. So I'll talk briefly about some of the priorities that we have, as I usually do, speaking largely to 2015 in a calendar year sense, and speaking in more detail in terms of the end of our fiscal year coming April 1st. But I just wanted to mention, you know, that we talked about some ongoing struggles with staffing and medical issues and those sorts of things. We continue to be hit hard by vacancies in that sense. People have been impacted at work with injuries and those sorts of things. So it's consumed a lot of time recently in trying to work with our medical staff, get people back where they are. But it has had an impact on our staffing levels, and I have had to collapse a couple of plainclothes resources and bring them back to uniform. Not something that anyone on the street would normally see or appreciate, but just in terms of managing major crimes and those sorts of things, it's a risk management model to keep enough people on the front line, so. Calls for service in 2015, up 1,000 over last year, and up 2,000 since 2012. So despite the decrease sometimes you see in crime stats, or specific crimes or criminal offenses reported, the actual calls coming into the police officer are on the rise and have continually been on the rise since 2012. We deal with a lot of things outside of actual criminal responses, and so sometimes mental health issues causes us to, you know, spend a lot of extra time doing those sorts of things, abandoned call, or abandoned alarm calls, those sorts of things. So we're looking significantly at some of the calls for service that we get, trying to maximize our front end in terms of response, but managing what we go to with the same number of resources is always a challenge. Very briefly, with respect to our prolific offender management program, still a priority of the province, that we have this mandated prolific offender program under the umbrella of crime reduction. And we're fortunate right now that we have several POMs or prolific offender management people that are currently in secure custody, and we're making plans to work with those folks when they get released, talking with probation them, to seek solutions for them so they don't come, you know, before the police, before the courts, and find themselves back in custody. And that is, that is one of the keystones of prolific offender management. It's not simply the response of the police once something happens, but trying to work with them prior to that crisis to get them, whether it's housing or whatever their needs are that are sort of driving the criminal offenses. And probation's a key component in that for us. We work very closely with probation, and it's a province-wide program that seems to work quite well. I know I've been able to report previously on specific instances of success, and I don't have a success story for you today, other than to talk about my appreciation for the program overall. Traffic safety and visibility for us on the roads is always an important aspect. We have three funded traffic positions here, and we enjoy support from South Island Traffic Services, who albeit paid for by the province, they live in Chaminas, and we get a fairly significant spinoff benefit from having them there. So just noted, as I went through the stats for the calendar year of 2015, that South Island Traffic Services, who come to us at no cost, had over 2,000 contacts this year so far within our detachment area. So a nice added benefit to road safety, visibility on the roads, and those sorts of things, as we try and slow the traffic down within the bounds of the community. The summer initiative for visibility was really pushed towards bike patrols, foot patrols, and the bar watch program, and the bike patrols tend to fade off in the rainy season, as it becomes more of a risk. But what we have significantly increased in September is our visibility in the school zones. So with the return to school in September, we try very, very hard to make sure we have some sort of police presence within the school zones, in the mornings in particular, just to reinforce for people that to slow down and be cautious of the children in the school zones. And this time of year, of course, it's a light issue as well, not so much when I was in the Arctic, when it was a light issue for more than half the year, but the darkness and, you know, the fading light near the end of the day is always something where we try to be present and sort of reinforce for people they need to slow down. In the domestic violence unit, the emergence of the Integrated Case Assessment Team, or ICAT as it's known, that's the cooperative effort that I talked about with some of the community support services, as well as the police, in managing some of the highest-risk domestic violence offenses. And very early in the program, but we've had some significant success already, and we can see where this should pay dividends in those highest-risk instances of domestic violence as we go forward. So I'm looking forward to being able to report by April 1st on some specific successes without getting into details of people's names, but I just see tremendous opportunity here for us to reduce recidivism in that area. And then there's the list of calls for service that's broken down for the types of calls that lead to that, you know, 1,000 call increase, or 15,500 calls for service in the calendar year of 2015. So there is a reference to that in the overall report that you got, just talks about the types of calls that we go to. And again, and I'll just preface that, and I've talked before about the types of calls, sometimes they're categorized in there a little differently than what you would expect to see. And that's a categorization of call for the dispatchers. They have specific types of calls that they frequently get, and they categorize them as they get dispatched. Once we go and attend and we see the details or figure out exactly what was going on, that's when it gets coded into the type of call it was. So if you see screaming on there, that actually is something that comes into the dispatchers fairly often. That's all people know, is they hear screaming, and when the police attend, screaming sometimes is kids at the beach, or sometimes it's an act of violence, or sometimes it's something somewhere in between. So it just really is a categorization of calls for the call takers or the dispatchers. I was surprised, I guess I picked on screaming, because it was one that caught me off guard. I didn't really realize that was something that they often got calls about, but apparently it is. So I learned a little something there as well. So lastly, just want to touch on the general duty staffing analysis report, and I talked previously, I guess it's new council meetings back, about our efforts to quantify what we do and where we do it, how long it takes us to do that. Within that analysis is a response to call, where we're timing how long it takes from the time the call comes in until it's dispatched, until we get there, and that sort of thing. And it has two focuses really for us. We want to be able to quantify that we're doing the best job with the people that we have. That comes down to staffing and scheduling for times of day and the shifts that we work, as well as the type of work and where we do it, and making sure that we have enough resources that not 100% of our time is allocated responding to calls, because if all we do is respond to calls, then we miss on those opportunities to be in the school zones, to be on foot or on bikes and other places. We're not specifically called to respond to something, but we need those visibility initiatives to be out there. So we're working towards an accuracy level that we can draw on, and I'm hoping to be able to speak more specifically to that by April 1st, in terms of where we're doing work and what type of work we're doing, that sort of thing. So I know you've got lots of delegations, and I know there's a lot of work to be done tonight. That in a nutshell is what I have for you, absent any questions from yourself, Mr. Mayor or Council.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councilor Duncan.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Inspector. Just one of the stats I saw in here was unwanted person stat. What might that be? And also, I've seen the jump from 71 to 125, year to year.
So can you point out which page you're on? Is that one of the calls for service?
Calls for service.
Page four of 34.
Yeah. So page four is, that's a calls for service that I talked about, where unwanted person, again, can be a lot of different things. It can be someone who is bound by a court order not to be there, but if that's the information presented to the dispatcher, it's an unwanted person. Sometimes it can be children in the home who've been thrown out, and maybe they're of age to be out on their own, but they come back for something. It can be someone in a broken marriage coming back for, you know, to collect some effects. It can be a stranger who knocks on the door at night and someone too afraid to answer the door. So it's really a very, very broad range, and it reflects the call that came in, but unfortunately statistically, it doesn't reflect the accuracy of what we really dealt with. So I'm at a bit of a loss to be too specific about it, other than that type of call certainly was on the increase for the dispatcher.
Thank you.
I hope that explains it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I just have sort of the main question, I guess, with respect to the resources that you have. Do you have any expectation from District D with respect to, I mean, some of them you said are on sick leave or other things like that. Is there any kind of sense as to when you might be able to get back up to a full complement?
Working hard with, you know, it's a collection of things. We have some people, of course, I've got one fellow who's off on paternity leave, another lady who's, you know, who's pregnant and soon to be off work, but can't function on the road. I have one member who broke her hand quite badly in an altercation, so she's having reconstructive surgery. I've had a couple of people with knee surgeries, one pending knee surgery, that sort of thing. And it's really just been a collection of a variety of different things that have come together. So that being said, I have two new people showing up this month from outside the detachment, two others, there are three others actually, that I have paperwork for their transfers, which should see them here hopefully April or May, and then working with the people that are off medically to get back. I'm optimistic that we'll be close on April 1st, but my optimism has waned a little bit over the years, as I see, you know, progressions of things. So we try really hard not to get hurt at work, but a few of these have come up from instances we've been dispatched to. So trying to make sure that people are safe out there, that they're doing things safely, and trying to make sure we have enough people to do things safely, which is why, you know, chose to collapse those plainclothes resources to put them on the front line.
Okay. Councilor Jackson.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I guess my question is, so because of the large number of medical and injury concerns, we continue to bolster our shifts with plainclothes officers. How can they go back to being plainclothes officers once they've been seen in uniform? Or are they from different communities, or how does that work?
No, they're from here, and when I say plainclothes, so we have working for us here in this detachment, 10 people under the plainclothes umbrella. So the plainclothes commander, we have GIS members who are kind of like detectives, and then we have street crew who are detectives that are more focused towards property crime and towards drug offenses, that sort of thing. So when I say plainclothes, don't confuse that with undercover.
Undercover, okay, all right. Thank you. Watching too much TV, I think.
I know. It's much, it's much more sexy on TV.
And Duncan, nobody would recognize you in the cover.
And I just had one other additional question. I, you know, I was looking at some of the calls for service, and I think it's pretty hard to see any particular trend in there. I guess the overall question I would have is, with respect to calls for service, is, and I know that they don't all turn out to be
Criminal.
Criminal or anything, but do you believe that the community policing initiatives have increased that awareness by the public with respect to making calls for service, or at least bringing to attention things that are out of the ordinary?
I certainly hope so, in the sense that, you know, I've been to some public meetings here and other places where people sometimes feel that although something happened in their neighborhood, they don't think that it's significant enough necessarily to call the police, even if it's perhaps a theft. And that's always problematic, because if we don't know something has happened, we can't identify trends or areas where things might be happening, or can't really quantify what we're doing in terms of true numbers. So there's always an element of underreporting that happens in a community. Sometimes, you know, as I say, people don't want to bother you, believe it or not, with things that have been stolen from their shed or their garage, and I've always been surprised by that. But the more we work within the community and community policing initiatives and make people aware of how important that is, there can be a corresponding increase in calls for service. I've looked at the numbers, and we're able to sort of analyze how many of those we can relate back, but unfortunately, it's a very fuzzy figure. But I'm very, very hopeful that everything we do in the community would drive up people calling us when things happen, or to report to us, or reflect the relationship that we build with our community policing initiatives in terms of the numbers of calls we receive.
Yeah. And we've certainly had that support from all the COs we've had here, you know, been very encouraging to the public generally, and I do recognize that Carol Ann Rolls is here and very involved with our community policing initiative here, so. That's it for me. If there's any other questions from council? No? So very much appreciate it, Inspector, and we'll see you again hopefully before the next quarter, but certainly at the next quarter.
Absolutely. Thanks again for the warm welcome.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. So we have our second delegation, and it's Judy Stafford from Couch and Green Community, and you're going to, I've seen this, I think.
Yes, sorry, you've seen it. And before you go, Inspector, I just want to thank the RCMP for all the support they've given us, for sure, at Kin Park and as well as our building. We've had a few late-night rendezvous with several of your staff, but always goes well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Judy Stafford from Couch and Green Community. I have a few of our board and staff. You've got the heavy hitters. You've got our president, Bev Suderman, our vice president, Nadine Nelson, and our treasurer, Mark Hazel, and Nora, who runs our edible landscaping business, and we have a heckler, apparently. Carol Ann is here to heckle us, so. So I think we'll just proceed with the video, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you hear it?
Just.
Welcome to our 2015 Year in Review video. What an exciting year it's been. Not only did we complete all of our regular core programming, but we started several new initiatives that were very exciting. The Couch and Agriculture Training Program was a new initiative for us this year, and has been extremely successful, and I'm hoping to continue this program in 2016, along with being able to start the Seed Incubator Farm Program with land leased from North Couch. Come celebrate with us as we revisit many of our accomplishments from 2015.
The multicolored building on Duncan Street, known as The Station, has had many changes and accomplishments lately, from providing housing for several new tenants and adding a property manager to the team, to a rebranding of our Garden Pantry Store and facilitating the use of our commercial kitchen to prepare lunches for 600 kids in our local schools. It was also a year of awards, with Judy Stafford winning the award from the DBIA for the Spirit of Excellence, and The Station winning the City of Duncan Commercial Building Award of Excellence and the Residential Building Award of Excellence. Our commercial renters, home and yoga and psychotherapy have thrived since joining the CGC family. Psychotherapy received the Black Tie Business Achievement Award for a business with 1 to 10 employees. We thank them both for the work that they do for our community.
Series Edible Landscaping is a social enterprise of the Couch and Green Community. The team behind our organic landscape company works with residential and commercial property owners to develop low maintenance and healthy gardens incorporating edible and native plants. Our portfolio includes large and small garden installations, utilizing the principles of permaculture and holistic design to build ecologically sound landscapes in communities. Some of our significant projects this year include feasibility and installation of a residential 68,000-later rainwater harvesting system, and the design and installation of an 8,000-square family food garden. Both projects address building capacity for growing one's own food and resilience in times of drought. Garden Pantry Store is truly the gateway to CGC. We are indeed the information center for all of our co-brands. We've also recently undertaken a new initiative to support local artisan artisans that we call our vendor showcases. By giving them an opportunity to market their goods and services within a breaking order, we charge them a small rental fee, which of course comes to support all of our co-brands here at CGC. The sixth edition of CGC's hugely successful Farm Fresh Food Guide to the Couch Valley hit the shelves in June, showcasing 61 diverse small-sale farms in the Couch region. The map and its online version offer consumers a comprehensive directory for sourcing all types of locally grown and processed foods, including baked goods, preserves, and homegrown beverages, from wine and cider to gin and juice. The Buy Local, Buy Fresh map reflects CGC's mandate to improve food security in the Couch region. It makes food producers more visible in the region, supports the growth into the market, and links consumers to local food, which is a cornerstone in building a resilient community. CGC is proud to have celebrated Fruit Save's 10th year in operation. With the goal of harvesting surplus fruit in the Couch region and distributing this valuable resource to local emergency food providers, the Food Save program is officially CGC's longest-running program. For the third year, CGC offered the Farmer's Market Nutrition Coupon Program with the Duncan Farmer's Market, delivered by the B.C. Farmers Market Association and funded by the Healthy Families B.C. The program gave 55 low-income families and seniors $15 a week to purchase fresh local produce from the market for 16 weeks. Thanks to a private donation, we added 11 youth to the program as well. To increase food literacy, participants had access to weekly nutritional information on products and season, attended the Food Skills for Families Cooking Program, and various canning workshops. This summer was our second year of our hugely successful Kin Park Kids Camp. This daycap invites children ages 5 to 12 to enjoy a weekly program of garden and nature-inspired activities, including hands-on horticulture, baking and canning healthy snacks, upcycled crafts, games, and so much more. This summer, we had 140 children attend our camp, who created many memories and friendships at Kin Park. The Kin Park Youth Urban Farm is a youth-led, sustainable agriculture demonstration site and market garden. Kin Park is also the site of 30 community garden plots rented out each year to a group of dedicated growers who live in the area but do not have access to garden space otherwise. We began the third year of an important partnership with Vancouver Island University's Workplace Essential Skills Training Program, WEST, whereby students facing a variety of disabilities fulfill their work experience at the Urban Park. The students learn valuable employability and community-building skills, while the farm benefits from the healthy camp, mulching, seeding, planting, and harvesting. In 2015, Kin Park once again offered a variety of learning opportunities around food preservation to families, youth, and children in our various programs. We canned pickles, hot pepper apple jelly, relishes, and green tomato salsa, and dehydrated a variety of fresh herbs to sell in CGC's Garden Pantry Store. With funding from the Community Action Initiative, Kin Park has been able to offer a range of free youth and family drop-in programming. Gathering around food enables to build a resilient, inclusive, and supportive family network by collaborating with other organizations to meet the needs of our community. The drop-in offers opportunities to learn about and develop skills around farming sustainably, cooking healthy meals, and developing leadership. This includes our family cooking classes, where we share a variety of food skills with an emphasis on the whole ingredient, drop-in farming fun days, after-school activities, and a monthly drop-in movie night. An integral part of the drop-in program is our youth outreach team, a group of eight youth in our community who are growing their leadership skills and strengths by assisting with drop-in programs and other CGC events, with a goal of creating a safe and inclusive place for children, youth, and families to hang out. In 2015, the CGC launched an exciting new initiative, the Couch and Agriculture Training Program, otherwise known as CAP. A pilot training partnership funded by the Ministry of Social Development, this program has provided the opportunity for eight participants to gain hands-on skills and experience, combined with classroom sessions and professional guest speakers. Six local farms hosted participants for the placement component of the pilot run. Couch and Agriculture Training has great potential, and we at the CGC want to continue to develop and refine this program for our region. The Town of Lake Couch and has a vision for a community garden at the town's recreation hub. Councilor Bob Day championed the plan and asked Couch and Green Community to lead the project and engage the community for their ideas. With the financial assistance of Island Health and Tree Canada, coupled with the energy and skill of community volunteers and businesses, we set out to transform a vacant lot into a productive garden. We offered educational workshops on various aspects of gardening, designed site plant, and through rain and sunshine, many hands helped to create pathways, build compost site, plant fruit trees and perennial crops, and build raised garden beds for all to grow in. The Couch and Lake Community Garden has become a gathering place for everyone, where people share skills and get their hands dirty growing food. The garden is now being stewarded by a committed group of local gardeners who continue to nurture the site for all to enjoy. The Couch and Valley Cooperative Marketplace was officially incorporated as a producers' cooperative this year. CGC was at the table to help guide its formation and the co-op's lead initiative, cowop.ca, the region's first online farmer's market. The marketplace launched in August and has been helping Couch and farmers and food processors sell their products ever since. Farm to plate with a click. CGC is known for hosting creative, inclusive, and educational workshops and events that strive to build a more food-secure Couch and. A highlight from the past year was Eat Big Boat Duncan. During Food Secure Canada's campaign, we shared a meal and engaged in dialogue with candidates running in the 2015 federal election. This event created space for four of the five candidates running in the Couch and Malahat Langford riding to meet and discuss food issues with residents of Vancouver. In July 2015, CGC was awarded our third contract to conduct environmental outreach for the Couch and Valley Regional District. Delivering public information on three of the CBRD's services, including water, transit, and zero waste, the Green team attended 10 public events throughout the Couch and region, including the Walk of Nations, a youth wellness fair, lake dates, and eco-stravaganza. We're excited that in 2015, CGC was able to provide 35 people with paid appointments. We'd like to thank our 200 donors, our 1,600 Facebook friends, our 1,000 Twitter followers, our 200 members, and our 330 volunteers who logged over 2,500 hours of community service. 2016 is going to be CGC's best year ever with your generous support. Things are always evolving around here. Come and see what's changed since your last visit.
I have to keep under the 10 minutes, so you don't get to watch that part. So, yes, and I forgot to say thank you for your generous funding, and I realize I don't think I've done my report yet for my end of the year, as I realized.
You don't need to do it right here.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And I did see that at the regional district last week, and it, there was quite an audience there for many other things, and I think a lot of people went away very impressed with the work that Couch and Green Community is doing. And I remember recalling the very, very, very humble beginnings of Couch and Green Community and how far it's come, so just, it's amazing, actually, just amazing. So, any questions or comments for you?
Yeah, you might like to tell everybody when your CD Saturdays are happening this year.
Oh, it's a CD Sunday.
CD Sunday, sorry, sorry.
And it is March 20th.
March?
March 20th. And it'll be at the Suleum Gym, the Suleum Gym.
Where will it be?
At the Suleum Gym. I think this is our eighth year.
Any other questions or comments? I just, I have one question for you, and it's with respect to the cowop. And I just ran into a gentleman who's moving here from Ladder and bought some property with facilities on it, and was thinking of looking around at some opportunities for growing, and he was considering, because of the buildings he has there and facilities of doing a mushroom, indoor mushroom operation. So is this sort of something that's developed for people who may want, are already producing or may want to produce some kind of crop to kind of connect with the market? I know that that's probably one of the bigger frustrations, you can grow all this stuff, but then you've got to go out and sell it and get it to market, and that's a real challenge for a lot of, a lot of people.
Yes, definitely, you should have him.
Can you elaborate a little bit on how that works?
Yep. So you can have him connect with us, for sure. There's about 30 producers right now who are on the site. We have about 130 or 140 customers right now, and so it's a weekly market, so you go online, and there's a cutoff time. It's Tuesday midnight, so between, I think it's Friday at noon to Tuesday midnight, you can go online and scroll through, whether it's by the producer or by the product, and there's a shopping cart. You just have to set up an account, and you just go click, click, click of all the things that you want to purchase. And then Wednesday, the producers gets the list of what they are to harvest, and then and then Thursday morning, they bring it down to our commercial kitchen, and we amalgamate the packages, because most people buy from several different producers, and then we put them all together in an order, and then at three o'clock, you can pick them up. So every weekend, the system, you know, shuts down, and then it reboots again, and the producers put in whatever else they, they can sell. So the nice part of it is that they know what to harvest, so that they, if they know they have three bags of carrots, then they can go and harvest just that, rather than, you know, at the market, just going and harvesting everything and hoping you sell it. So there is, it is to complement the market in the other ways that farmers sell, for sure, but... So far, I mean, we had a slow start, it's only been running for four months, and it's not the best time of year to find things to buy right now, so... But there's other value-added products that are on there as well.
Are there any, um, is there any thoughts of that expanding also with, uh, some of the commercial, um, users?
Yes, absolutely, and we're talking about actually someone right now who wants to, um, buy herbs in a lo-, very, very large scale. So what we're, what in longer-term intent is to be able to take those large orders and then have them broken down to several different producers in order to satisfy the need of the larger growers, for sure, or the larger purchasers.
Great, excellent.
Yep.
Counselor Bell, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, that's cool, and I think once that gets out, I think you'll probably get really busy, because that's really awesome. Um, it really saves from having to go from store to store, because I have certain stores I buy certain things in and, and that they're known for, and then other stores not, but that wasn't my comment. Um, just that I, I think I say this every time, and I know maybe in my head, but doubt it. Uh, I appreciate every time you come and do your presentations, because it's just, there's so much that you're doing that most of us won't hear or know about, so... And the edible gardens is awesome, like if the city of Duncan can do edible gardens in all our roundabouts, and that would be a, a dream all the way down Truck Road or something, but, uh, it's really cool, so thank you for doing that, because we don't really hear a lot about what's going on, so, uh, it'll be top-of-line for us, so it's very strategic, but also welcomed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we'll go to our third delegation, which is Kendra Thomas from Warmland, uh, Warmland Women's Support Services Society, and you're here to present on the, I want to say redress, but it's red dress. And it's kind of a double meaning there, so...
Yes.
Yeah, so, thank you for coming, it's nice to see you again.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Kendra Thomas, Program Coordinator for Warmland Women's Support Services, an Incorporated Non-Proff Society working to preserve the dignity and value of women and self-identified women who are transgendered by providing services grounded in feminist theory and cultural competence, addressing gender-based violence and its impact on women, youth, and families in the Cowichin Valley. We are seeking permission to use Charles Hoey Park as a venue for a social action event addressing violence against Aboriginal women and young girls, specifically the nearly twelve-hundred missing and murdered Aboriginal women in Canada. This event is not funded and is not for profit. The Red Dress Project is an art-turned-protest display created in 2010 by Metis artist Jamie Black as a response to the astounding number of missing and murdered Aboriginal women over the past thirty years in this country. Hanging red dresses primarily from trees, the project has been displayed in public spaces across the country, including the Canadian Museum of Human Rights. Publicly hanging a red dress as a symbol gives us the ability to talk about the issue. Red is a striking color, and an empty dress hanging from a barren tree has a haunting visual impact. It is a bleak reminder of the tragedy of horrendously devalued Aboriginal women. We must not forget them or their story. Sunday, February fourteenth, 2016, Warmland Women's Support Services Society will both honor and draw attention to missing and murdered Aboriginal women by hanging red dresses from trees in downtown Duncan. This striking one-day display will coincide with the annual Stolen Sisters' March in Vancouver's Lower East Side. There will be no speakers or a public address of any kind, but rather a silent vigil of red dresses with placards of explanation. We will hang their dresses by nine AM and remove them before dusk. Hayet Ilailam House of Friendship supports this event, and Cowichin Tribes Council directed us to meet with Cowichin Tribes Band Manager Maureen Tommy to discuss Cowichin Tribes' participation as well. In summary, we are seeking permission to hang the red dresses in Charles Hoey Park. Mayor and Council, we appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us to make our community a safe and inclusive place. Our life is held sacred.
Thank you, Kendra, I'm going to take questions if you're, if you're okay from the council. And we do, we are going, we do have a resolution or a recommendation of, uh, alternate resolutions here. Um, so before you go, we'll, we'll deal with that, and, uh, so Counselor Jackson?
I was actually going to move the recommendation, I've been aware of this for quite some time, and it's very powerful.
Any discussion? Counselor Bell?
Just that you know it's a small community, and so I would just want to make sure that you are reaching out to the other community, because I know you're a new organization.
Yes.
And, um, so I just would want to make sure that, that you're not doing something that somebody else is doing, or that, um, I know sometimes, like, for instance, today, in my organization, we put out a poster, and we got feedback on that poster because of... So just to make sure that you know that you can learn the hard way, or you can learn that you've talked to the other community. So here you've talked to Cowichin Tribes.
Yes.
Um, and, yeah, so just, I would just, that's more of a comment than anything, is making sure the other organizations, they're not doing, they're not going to come to us and say, "Well, we wanted to do something in the park," or "We're doing one across the street," or something.
Yes.
As far as this goes, I think it makes a huge impact, and I know they've done it in other communities last year, and people were talking about it, just driving up Island, and so I'm in support of that, it just, uh, make sure we're not overlapping, or, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion at all? Okay, and so I'm going to call the question on the motion, which is the recommendation to approve the Warmland Women's Support Services Society's request to use Charles Hoey Park on Sunday, February fourteenth, from nine AM to dusk, to hold the Red Dress Project in order to make that awareness, and so, uh, I'll call the question on that. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries, and so you have your approval for that, uh, project, and I appreciate that you're doing it, and I think it will have an impact.
I think so too, yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, can I have just another comment? Um, if somebody had a red dress, I understand that you're still collecting them.
Yes, we are.
If somebody had a red dress, they would like to donate to this project, do you have a place where they could drop them off, or could they?
Um, if they want to get, uh, contact us, and then I'm going to go around, we're going to go around and pick them all up, um, at a particular time, so... Warmlandwomen.org, um, email address and contact information is there. Or our Facebook page, Warmland Women's Support Services, on Facebook as well, too.
That's great, I, I hope this becomes an annual event, actually.
We have an intention to make it an annual event, yeah.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night. So we move on to a portion of the regular agenda, then. Um, we have one item which we are rising report from closed session, which is item six-one. Uh, it's with respect to Tourism Committee Appointment, and the following recommendation was endorsed at the December twenty-first, 2015 closed council meeting, that Lance Stewart be appointed to the Tourism Committee for the term ending December 2018 to replace Jeff Downey as the Restaurant Liaison.
Do we just receive for information?
Just, just for receiving, receivables, so that's a thing, and I, I did actually, uh, call him this evening just to confirm that he was still great, and he's all on it, he knows when the meeting is, he's read his material, and he's looking forward to participating, uh, participating, so... And it should be a good, uh, time for him to come in as well. So, uh, we move on to the report of the Chief Administrative Officer, and, uh, it's been circulated by Mr. Dervitai, if you'd like to go over the highlights.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'll just, excuse me, touch on, uh, a few of the, the residential water metering. I'm happy to report that it's about ninety percent complete in the Eagle Heights area of the water system, and on tonight's agenda is the award of Phase Two, which is the city area of the water system, and will begin soon afterwards, because obviously they're pretty close to completing on Eagle Heights, so... So we'll then get the communications out for the city residents and, and whatnot. I don't think that's under taking, but this is going to happen, yeah. The emergency coronation, we, we've taken some recent, uh, processes and procedures to rule out the power oscillation, so that's been confirmed, and so the well number three on Alwiston Grove, uh, will be proceeding to commissioning very soon now. The, will be a RFP going out, a request for proposals for the Coronation Avenue Traffic Study. It's later this week, and it'll be posted on Civic Info as well, and that will review, review the pedestrian safety and options on coronation, particularly at the Festivert and Saint Julian Intersections. We also have, either later this week or early next week, we'll have a, an RFP for the Canada Avenue and Government Street intersection upgrades to go out. That'll review the traffic flow options for River Road and Underwood, and then undertaking, depending on results of that, the detailed design of creating a double-left turn at Canada and Government Street. The marketing strategy has been awarded to Hot House Marketing, and we will have the first meeting of the Tourism Committee with that, uh, consultant on January twenty-first, and so that'll be nice to see that get rolling. The website redevelopment is well underway, and staff are working with the consultant to review the site map, and the site map is the flow of how the information's going to be laid out and, and structured to try to make it as, as, uh, easy for everybody to find what they're looking for. And lastly, staff, uh, from all jurisdictions after the, after the summer period, uh, did sort of a debrief, and will be bringing back recommendations to change the water restrictions back to seven to nine PM in the morning and evening, based on the feedback that we received from residents over the summer. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Questions at the end, yes, please. Um, so we'll move to, uh, reports of committees, and we have a report from the Committee of the Whole Recommendations, this is item nine-one-one, um, as, with respect to the Administrative Letter of Support Policy, and there's a motion that council approved. The Administrative Letter of Support Policy is attached to the January fourth report of the Chief Administrative Officer. So moved, seconded, thank you, any discussion on that? Mr. Dervitai, would you like to speak to it at all?
The Administrative Letter of Support Policy?
Yes.
Sorry, it's a, it's a policy that oftentimes we'll get, uh, sort of last-minute requests for a letter of support from our neighboring jurisdictions or organizations that we have already provided some grant funding to for sort of a known project, and rather than, and oftentimes those grants become, uh, known at the eleventh hour, and it would be appreciated, or actually, over the years, have provided letters of support from, on an administrative basis, as opposed to bringing it through to council. So this basically, um, um, enshrines that sort of practice, that's sort of a historical thing, with the city's new, uh, Letter of Support Policy that we've got for all other applicants, it was felt that we should clarify this particular practice.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Bell?
Just that, is it, they're included that, that these will be forwarded to us? Like if you do a letter of support?
Yeah, it's in the policy that will, will, any letter of support that's administrative-based, it's given out, we'd definitely be advising council that that's occurred. Whereas in the past, I don't think that's always happened before.
Because I see this one here for social planning, Cowichin, I'm the liaison, so... We've given them a letter of support, but I wasn't aware of it, so I'm, I should probably know.
That's why I felt that the, there really should be a policy clearly laying out which, when, when that would be appropriate to give an administrative letter of support and when not, and then what that would look like exactly as for a notice, so...
Yeah, and, and I think the requests from many organizations, they, they're not, they're not necessarily picking up our policy and looking at the way they would come to us. Many of them come in different ways at different times, for different reasons, so we can't always anticipate that, and, uh, their organization or internal processes within that, uh, you know, are subject to differences, so... This, at least when it comes to us, this is how we will, this is how we will manage it.
Yeah, because they're, I mean, they're just going to go to whoever, sometimes just the person they're talking to.
They may do that.
But if we have an internal process where it's clear all the time, then it just avoids that looking like we don't know what we're doing, or, yeah.
Well, we never do that, actually. Look like we don't know what we're doing. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. So, anything out of the ordinary that you don't feel comfortable with, it'll, it'll come to us, and, uh, I assume, I think you said that in that previous meeting. Uh, and also, um, informing us, is that going to be in, in the way of, like, we'll get an email, or is it just going to be included in the info pack, or?
Uh, I can't recall what the policy said, I thought it addressed that. Don't want to miss it, speak. Violate weekly information package.
Okay, right, any further discussion on this? I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So I'll move back to item one, which I missed, thank you, Counselor Duncan, um, which is with respect to the building, uh, statistics report for December 2015, and, uh, motion to receive the information, moved by seconded. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So we move to item nine-one-two, which is a report from the Tourism Committee, and I'll ask Counselor Duncan to read the recommendation.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, taken from the November seventeenth Tourism Committee Minutes. Uh, it was moved and seconded that the following recommendation be forwarded to council for approval, that two pedestal totem signs be created for, one, the Vic Scudder Totem, recently gifted to the city and located in Station Street Park, and two, the Mortuary Totem on loan from the museum and recently located, relocated inside of the city hall, and that the city engage the services of Catherine Gagnon, curator for the Cowichin Valley Museum, to research and document oral histories from the Carvers and/or Carvers' families, and that the city engage the services of graphic designer, of a graphic designer to design the layout of the sign, and that the costs of construction, the cost to construct the pedestal totem signs, curatorial services, and graphic design be allocated from the totem, from the totem committee budget.
So moved, thank you, and seconded, okay, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So we move to item nine-one-three, this is with respect to the tender award for residential water metering, uh, for Phase Two, that Duncan, or that council confirm the award of the supply and installation contract for Phase Two, the residential water metering program to Corix Utilities Incorporated, for the revised tender amount of one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, taxes included.
So moved.
Okay, seconded, okay, any discussion? And that is all accounted within our five-year financial plan and the program that was, uh, put out earlier, and, um, just a question with respect to the timing for the final phase of the water metering. Have we made any progress on that at this time? Okay? Okay, great, Counselor Jackson?
So, this is going to be starting, um, residential metering up in Eagle Heights and?
No, Eagle Heights is almost complete, this is for the city of, for the actual city of Duncan.
So what part of the city will it be starting in, or do we know?
I don't have to answer that, my festival chair, but there would be notifications, sorry.
There would be notifications that would go into that particular area, as well as city-wide notifications, so, and they'll, each one will get a door knock before that anybody, uh, is, is actually doing work on their particular service.
Right, do, uh, when they install the, uh, the meter, does the water to the house have to be shut off for that period of time while it?
Very briefly, but yes, it will be shut off, so if, if they're in the house at the moment, then they're, they would be notified that they're going to have a shut off briefly. If they're not home, then there's a little impact.
Oh, I'm sure that as long as people have noticed, it'll be fine?
But we have received, I don't think, any negative feedback through the process of running through Eagle Heights so far on that type of issue. More, more it's been, where's the service located, has been our predominant challenge sometimes.
Thank you.
Counselor Duncan?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, so, do we have to wait for all three phases to be in place? Or can we actually start, um, using the Eagle Heights? So what I'm thinking of is that, um, the metering does identify leaks, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out that we have to wait till we finish Phase Three before we can actually maybe turn on number one, you know, Eagle Heights, or?
That's not the intent, we, we, as you know, have done a large bunch of installs for the commercial side of things, and we have, and finally got the, um, system aspect of the meter reading and importing into the financial system, so that's pretty close to be ready to go now, and so pretty soon we'll be able to send out mock bills on the commercial side, so, once we confirm our rates for residential, uh, rates going forward, we'll be sending out mock bills to the residents in the, it'll take a cycle, so we get them all installed, and then you need a six-month period to be able to give people an indication as to what kind of water uses they're doing, before we then turn around and give them an actual bill.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So move on to bylaws, we have, uh, bylaw three-one-three-nine-zero-one, Animal Regulation Impounding Bylaw, ownerless cats, and the council give first readings to the Animal Regulation Impounding Amendment Bylaw number three-one-three-nine-point-zero-one-twenty-sixteen, bylaw to authorize the feeding up to five ownerless cats, subject to certain conditions, and minor housekeeping amendments. And maybe before we take a motion for that, Mrs. Robertson, if you would like to just, uh, recap that bylaw, because we've made, uh, previous changes to the animal control bylaws, and, uh... recap that bylaw, because we've made previous changes to the animal control bylaws, and...
Right.
So this is another amendment.
Yeah. This particular bylaw that's before council tonight is in response to some concerns that were cited through the media, from participants through the Kowchan Cat Rescue Organization, and they had sort of cited concerns with the portion of the bylaw that prohibited the feeding of ownerless cats or cats without identification. So, and their concern is that their organization through outdoor feeding colonies have, they spay and neuter these ownerless cats, they vaccinate them, they tattoo them, and then release them back where they were trapped so that they don't continue to produce offspring and reduce the number of stray cats with the city. So staff met with the president of the Kowchan Cat Society, and we also met with our Coastal Animal Control, who's our service provider, and SPCA was unable to meet with us but provided us with written comments, and through that process, we did come up with some solutions that would help us reduce the number of cats perhaps in one home to prevent hoarding, et cetera, and allow them to continue with their trap, neuter, and return programs. So one of the things, or the requirements would be that they must be registered with an organization that does the trap, neuter, release program. There would have to be evidence in writing for the care, feeding, and mandatory spray, neutering, tattooing, vaccination. There is a requirement that they would have feeding stations on private property for only up to forty-five minutes maximum, once per day, and this is in order to prevent rodents from being attracted in the area. Also, to assist with the care of the outdoor animal is to provide shelters, so Kowchan Cat Rescue, for example, provides outdoor shelters for these cats. And the total number of cats, whether it be a companion animal or whether you're providing care for ownerless cats cannot exceed five cats per lot. And also, in discussion, we found that it would be beneficial to add a clause to the bylaw that every owner of an outdoor cat must have a cat spayed or neutered, and this is also to assist in preventing uncontrolled breeding.
Okay. So with that explanation for us and the public, is there a mover for the...
So moved.
Thank you. Then seconded? Seconded? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call the question. Oh, councillor Duncan.
Thank you, your worship. So you've got five cats per lot, so if you've got a duplex lot, it's ten, or...
I have to go back to see what the definition of the, there is a definition of lot in the bylaw, but unfortunately, I don't have the full bylaw with me, so I'd have to go back to that to see whether it'd be ten or five.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we move to new business, which is, we have two proclamations. The first proclamation is, the week of February eighth to fourteenth, 2016, be proclaimed as Variety Week in the city of Duncan. And is there a mover for that?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And the second one is Eating Disorder Awareness Week, and that is to be proclaimed for February first to seventh, 2016. And a motion for that? Moved, seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we move to reports of mayor and council. Any reports from council? Councillor Jackson? Okay, and I'll give a brief report. There's been a number of things happening, but none of them really at a point to report out on, but I do want to talk, I did go to the chamber board meeting, as councillor Horgan was unavailable to go to the meeting, and to give a bit of a presentation on the marijuana dispensaries bylaws that we had amended and changed. It was a very fruitful discussion, had very good questions, and experiences that were relayed around the table, around how they viewed it, and some of the business perspective that they brought to it, so there was a little bit of back-and-forth feedback from them. I think there was very general support with the way that we were providing at least clarity in the meantime, and so that was a good board meeting. I remained for all of the board meetings, just to watch their deliberations about other things, and they are, again, continuing to grow members there, and I did congratulate them for their efforts in that. They've done a great job over the last number of years to really grow their membership, and to service as well, the visitor services that they do for the Kowchan Valley, so there are some, I think, positive things for them going forward, and I think they will see their membership grow even further. On the marijuana dispensaries, I did do an interview on CBC last week on those, and it was a good interview, and we, I answered the questions as clearly as I could, and I'm not sure how many people heard it, but they were, they were good questions, very broad questions, and felt in some, in some ways that we had done it somewhat differently in the way that other communities had addressed it, but it's quite clear that there's, there's just different ways, and the fact that municipalities are having to address it in different ways shows the vacuum that we might be getting with respect to the federal policy regarding it, and so I think that's, that's the, that was the general outcome of the interview. I've been also approached by CFUV in Victoria, which I think is, I'm not sure what they're affiliated with, but it's a blog interview, and she'll be calling me on Wednesday. I did listen to her, Ms. MacArthur's interview of Lisa Helps and others in the industry, both people who are licensed producers and people who are working and developing the dispensaries, and it was very, very balanced story, and she's going to be doing a series, so she'll be looking at our community on Wednesday when she talks to me about it, so... But I felt it was actually very informative, and so if you do get a chance, she does it through a kind of a podcast kind of broadcast, but it's CFUV in Victoria, and so that'll come out on Wednesday, and there'll be another broad set, and I think the people she interviewed from the street, to the dispensaries, to people who are licensed producers, was very well-done. Very good questions, so... And that completes it for me at this time. I attended the strategic planning session for Island Coast Economic Trust on Thursday, and will be going to a board meeting on this coming Thursday and Friday as well, so... All right, so that completes my report. Councillor Jackson?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, January the twelfth, I did something that was completely out of character. I got up very early and went to the Kowchan Tribes Council swearing in at the Silver Bridge Inn. There were quite a lot of people there, and it was, they did a very fine ceremony, and I was happy to be there. I'm sorry that you were on table to make it, I would have liked to have spoken on your behalf, but councillor Staples was also there. Yeah, it was a, it was a good day, and I was glad to be able to witness it. I suddenly realized that if we are actually going to have better relations with the Kowchan Tribes Council, that maybe it would behoove me to make more of an effort to attend more of their events, and I intend to do that, so that was event number one.
Great. And I think this is new for them. I think they did it at the last election, and so, and, you know, there, I think there's an attempt for them to make some of those things more public as well, so that's great that you could go, and I, unfortunately, my knowledge of it wasn't until last minute, and I was just not, you know, taken, but I did send my regrets to chief and council as well at that time. Councillor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship. I attended the Island Savings Meeting on Thursday, where I was the second person to nominate councillor Jackson to be chair again, and great campaign, and she won again. And on the weekend, I had put my paperwork in for the position of vice-chair for the Vancouver Island Regional Library, and it was successful.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. That's a good organization, well-run, and, yeah, that's very good. Okay, and with nothing else, we've got question periods, so is there any questions? Councillor Jackson?
I have a couple. When you said you were interviewed on the CBC, was that Victoria CBC?
Yes.
And what day was that? Maybe it's a podcast they have.
Oh, gosh, my days, so busy, run together.
Last week, anyway.
It was last week, and it was All Points West was the program.
And as far...
In the afternoon.
What is it, sorry?
I think it runs between three and five.
Okay. And the second question is in regard to the feedback that you got from the chamber, was it generally positive, or were they, what was your feeling about that? And also to say, like, will we have another opportunity to meet with, say, the DBIA and get some feedback from that part of the business community as well?
I think there was certainly support. The BIA was here when we were, had the public hearing with respect to the bylaws, and I think they're supportive of the direction that we've gone at this point. I felt the same with respect to the chamber, but there's, there were larger questions with respect to just how it all works. Not everybody's in the same place of understanding, you know, what regulations are actually in play, and so they had some questions about that, but I think they were supportive in terms of the way we've provided some clarity for the community that might be looking to go into that business, as well as, they were looking for the same kind of clarity from the federal government as well, that they needed to be addressed and put into proper regulation, so... Okay?
Thank you.
Any further questions with respect to the agenda? Okay, so we'll have a, will be a motion to resolve to go into closed session, and this meeting be closed to the public under the following section of the community charter, section ninety-one-I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose.
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
And just, your worship, if I may, I thought I'd get a question on something else, but it doesn't matter. The, with respect to the five cats on a lot, I just did some digging in the definition of lot is legal lot, so if it's actually a separately legal lot, then it is, this is a separate five cats, so if it's a legal duplex, that's actually separated by two, by a, say, common wall or something like that, that would count as two separate dwellings, but if it's a, if it's a secondary suite, for example, that wouldn't...
That wouldn't, okay. All right, so a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor? Opposed? And we'll just take a brief recess and convene for closed session.